I now call to order the January 24, 2022, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:00 PM. Let the minute show that a forum is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Harrell and the pledge on the Texas flag by Ms. Sharp.
Thank you. I would say, we should just do this with our, because one, we pray that all people on campus, yes, are responsible and headed towards a positive path, yes, that we can do better, okay, but we just got to. To the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, to the Republic, to the Father, to God, to the people, to the State of God, one community.
Item two on the agenda is recognitions. Ms. Rios, you're up first.
Great, hello, hello. Well, we're just here tonight from all of our principals representing. We just want to thank you so much for your service on behalf of not just our principals, but our teachers and our students of New Caney ISD. We want to say thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. Celebrating you on this day is not enough when we compare it to the long hours and the sacrifices you make each day advocating for our students. You are incredible citizens who go to extraordinary lengths to serve our community. This year, the Texas Association of School Board Appreciation theme is Rising Above. Throughout these difficult times, you have consistently put students first and helped us problem solve to create the best working environment for our employees. Thank you for lifting us up and empowering us to make the best decisions for our students, staff, and community. We thank you and honor you today and every day. So we put together some goodies, and so you have some representation from all of our campuses, and we thank you so much again, and Happy Appreciation Month.
Thank you. Thank you. Up next from Pine Valley Middle School is Ms. Holly Ray.
Well, I am Holly Ray. I'm the principal of Pine Valley Middle School, the very proud principal of Pine Valley Middle School. I want to say thank you so much to Mr. Calvert and to you as the school board, just for the opportunity to be able to just showcase and recognize the people who exemplify who Pine Valley Middle School is tonight. And so, thank you so much for this opportunity. This is my first time to do this in three years of being a principal, because other things shut this down when it was my month, so you can just imagine my excitement is actually multiplied by being here. I would like to just, for just a moment, if you are here to support these people standing up here, and you are from Pine Valley, will you please stand up? Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you for being here to show your support. This is the kind of school that Pine Valley Middle School is. The first person that I would actually like to, I would like to recognize is our teacher, Ms. Alyssa Smith. Ms. Smith is a 7th grade math teacher at Pine Valley. She is positive, radiant, and knows how to motivate her students with great humor to do math, and that is a real gift. She is yes-minded in every way and serves as a sponsor for student council. As a member of our Seven Mindsets team, she exemplifies what educator Rita Pearson says, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." Thank you, Ms. Smith, for being a champion for our students. Next, I'd like to recognize our paraprofessional, Ms. Mary Almaguer. Ms. Almaguer is my secretary, my administrative assistant, and she is outstanding. Few principals know the unseen task, responsibility, and problem-solving skills that come with this position. She possesses those skills, but even more so, it is her kindness, patience, and willingness to serve others that makes her worthy of this recognition tonight. While this position is difficult in and of itself, the past couple of years have added much to this position, to the stress of this role of being the principal secretary, but Ms. Almaguer has carried out her job with grace and with poise. I am incredibly proud to call you a PVS Mustang, so thank you, Ms. Almaguer, for caring deeply about all the staff and the students at Pine Valley Middle School. We are so grateful for you and for your leadership. The next person I'd like to recognize is Ms. Cynthia Took. She is our child nutrition manager, and let me just tell you what a joy it is to have her on our campus. From the time I had the privilege of meeting Ms. Took, I knew that she was here for our kids. She, her passion for students and her desire to meet their needs, both through food and kind words, makes her an exceptional leader at Pine Valley. She has managed countless changes and staff shortages, but nothing has stopped her from being a team player and having perfect attendance. So, thank you, Ms. Took, for stepping up during the most difficult of times, for being yes-minded, and for caring about our kids at Pine Valley Middle School. We are grateful for you. Our custodian could not be here tonight at the last minute. He had an emergency, but I want to go ahead and recognize him. His name is Anthony Hollyfield, and I will just tell you, this is our first, this is his first full year on our campus, and he is our lead custodian. We could not be more grateful for his leadership. He takes great pride in what our campus looks like on a daily basis in maintaining a neat and orderly environment for our school. He is quick to respond to any campus need that we have, and you know that our campus has had some needs. And so, he does a fabulous job of serving as a positive role model for the staff that he leads, and he's an outstanding communicator and problem solver, and is willing to do whatever it takes to make Pine Valley Middle School the best place to be for our students and our staff. So, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Hollyfield for being a leader, but being a leader with a servant's heart. The next award goes to Lane Cullum, and Lane could not be here tonight, but his parents are here, and I'm so grateful they could represent him. Lane is our CTE student, and Lane is a junior FFA member at Pine Valley Middle School. This fall, he exhibited a pig at East Montgomery County Fair, and he will be showing another pig at the Montgomery County Fair later this semester. Lane is a member of the Pine Valley Livestock Judging Team, and he has never missed a practice. He always contributes to helping team members find the right answer when working through classes of livestock, which was very impressive. Lane is a member of the 8th grade basketball team and does a great job in all of his classes. He exemplifies Mustang pride, and we are so proud to have him at Pine Valley Middle Our student athlete is Alyssa Legay. Alyssa is an 8th grade student at Pine Valley Middle School. She exemplifies what it means to be a Mustang, both on and off the court. She is a young woman with upstanding character and serves as a role model for others. She radiates positivity and enthusiasm in everything that she does. She gives 100% in all that she does and shines with great sportsmanship both on the court. She understands the mindset that "we" is greater than "me," and when it comes to her teammates, she is a great example for others and exhibits the greatest all-around attributes of leadership, character, and teamwork. Alyssa, we are proud to call you a Pine Valley Mustang. And now, our fine arts student, Ms. Hannah Barker. Hannah is our fine arts student. She is currently an 8th grade OBO student in the Pine Valley Middle School Honors Band. She is a consistent A Honor Roll student and earned a seat in Region 33 Middle School Wind Ensemble and Full Orchestra, outperforming other middle schools in the district in Spring and in Aldine ISD. She's a hard worker and is always willing to volunteer. She serves our campus on the Yearbook Staff, National Junior Honor Society. She is not only a Model Band student, she is a shining example of what it means to be a Pine Valley Mustang. So, thank you, Hannah, for being an exemplary band student, but being an exemplary person. We are grateful for you. Again, thank you so much, school board, Mr. Calvert, for the opportunity to showcase our students. We are so incredibly proud of who they are, and thank you for all that you do to support us on a daily basis.
Good evening, Mr. Calvert and board members. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize some of the amazing people that work at the Learning Center. The first person I'd like to recognize, Ms. Antonia Westbury could not be with us today, but Ms. Westbury is half of our custodial staff at the Learning Center. Ms. Westbury and her colleague are responsible for the Learning Center, New Caney ISD Police Department, and the Child Nutrition Building. She makes sure buildings are clean and sanitized each morning and maintains that throughout the day. She does a very good job for us. Our second person I'd like to recognize is Ms. Becky Hernandez. She is our food service person at the Learning Center. Ms. Hernandez, every day, twice a day, brings nutritious meals from New Caney Elementary to the Learning Center to feed her students. Ms. Gilmore, the cafeteria manager at New Caney Elementary School, says Becky is a leader in the kitchen, is a hard worker, and works very well with everyone. She's very dependable and always has a smile on her face. She says, "We, as a team, could not do without her." All right, next, we have Ms. Yolanda Castillo. Ms. Castillo, Ms. Castillo is a first-year employee at the Learning Center. I was lucky to get her from another campus, and we're so fortunate to have her. Her official position is attendance clerk, but she wears several hats at the Learning Center. For example, today, she was a secretary, she was a register, she was the nurse, along with being the attendance clerk. So, she runs from task to task with a smile on her face, and you never would know anything's bothering her, so she's truly an asset to our campus. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kristen Tripp. Ms. Kristen Tripp is our middle school ELA teacher. She's been in this role at the Learning Center for 11 years. Ms. Tripp has a passion to see students succeed. She is excellent at building professional teacher-student relationships with her students, enabling students to become successful in her structured classroom environment. She is yes-minded and eager to help in any capacity on her campus. She consistently goes above and beyond what is required of her at the Learning Center. Again, Mr. Calvert, board members, thank you for giving us the opportunity.
All right, item number three on the agenda is a consideration of the 2020-2021 Annual Financial Report presented by Mr. Greg Peterson.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Greg Peterson. I'm the audit partner on the audit engagement. It is my pleasure to present to you tonight the results of the August 31, 2021 audit of New Caney ISD. Like any good book, we're going to skip right to the back if y'all want to follow along with me. The back is where all the good information is. So, I'm actually going to turn to page 97 if y'all want to follow along. Now, it's probably a lot of swiping up and arrowing down, looking at it in electronic format, but on page 97, you'll see the Schedule of Findings and Question Cost, and what we're looking at here is basically the summary results of the audit. So, when we perform our audit, we do it in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. So, we really focus on looking at the numbers, but as part of our process, we also evaluate the district's internal controls, just to help add validity to the numbers, to ensure that the controls and processes in place are sound. So, when it comes time to issue the report, we render an opinion, and that's really the whole purpose of an audit, is for the auditor to render an opinion on these financial statements, to say whether they're fairly stated or not. So, the opinion that we're going to render is an unmodified opinion, so that's also known as a clean opinion, so that's the highest level of assurance that you can receive in an audit. As I mentioned, we also evaluated the district's internal controls, and we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the district's internal controls. As part of our audit process, we also have to audit the district's federal awards. So, throughout that process, again, we evaluate internal controls over the financial compliance requirements with these federal grants, and we also render an opinion. This year, we are also rendering an unmodified opinion on our single audits, the test of those federal programs. We also did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over those internal control processes related to those federal grants. So, on page 97, we actually list the programs that we performed a single audit on, and we actually did five single audits this year, which is a pretty large number, and a lot of that related to the COVID, additional COVID funding that the district received. So, through our single audits, we actually got 81% coverage of your total federal expenditure. So, we got $18 million coverage out of $22 million of total federal expenditures, so we sure did look at those federal grants this year. But again, I guess the big takeaway from this page is unmodified opinions on both the financial statements and on the single audit reports, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies on internal controls. You know, if you could grade an audit, you know, this would definitely get an A. I mean, this is, these are the kind of results that you would want to, you want to see in an audit. Next, we'll talk about some of the numbers just briefly. If I can, we'll go back to page 18, so we're going to jump back to the front of the report now. Lot of swiping again, but what we'll do is we'll just focus on a few of the major funds that we have here in the district. So, we'll look at the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the district. And just on page 18 and 19, that's the balance sheet of the district's governmental funds. So, the general fund has $59 million in total assets, and about 82% or 48, $49 million of that is sitting in cash and investments, so you have a very liquid general fund. The next biggest number to look at when you're evaluating the balance sheet is fund balance for the general fund. So, your total fund balance is 42.6 million or 42.7, and about 42.6 of that is sitting in a category called unassigned. So, unassigned fund balance means it's not restricted for some other purpose, it's available for use, for general operating uses. And what we like to do is we like to compare that unassigned fund balance to total operating expenses. So, essentially, you have about 92 days of operating expenses sitting in your unassigned fund balance, which is a very healthy unassigned fund balance. A lot of districts struggle to hit the 30 to 60-day mark, and y'all have, y'all sit at 92, so very liquid, very accessible general fund fund balance. So, next, we'll look at the debt service fund. So, the debt service fund, just like it sounds, is the fund that you used to pay for debt service of the district. We have $9.5 million in total assets, you get about $83 million of that, or 83% of that, about $8 million is sitting in cash and investments, and you have total fund balance of about $7 million, all of that being restricted for future debt service. And the final fund I'd like to talk about is your capital project fund. So, this is the fund that's used when you issue bonds for building, future buildings, capital assets. It gets reported into this fund. So, we have $93.9 million of total assets, 100% of that balance is sitting in cash and cash equivalents, so that's just unspent bond funds that are going to be used for future projects. You have total fund balance of $81.5 million. Again, all of that being restricted for those capital projects in the future. We'll go ahead and we'll flip over to page 22 and 23. This is the income side statement, so we looked at the balance sheet side. Now, we're going to look at the income side for these governmental funds. Looking at your general fund, you had total revenues of $168.7 million. That's a 2% increase from prior year, so relatively flat. You have total expenditures of $169.6 million, which is a 5% increase from prior year, with the largest piece of that being in facility construction and acquisition, so the general fund also helped acquire some of these capital assets in FY '21. Going to your debt service fund, you had $29.1 million in revenue. It's a 7% increase over the prior year. You have $30.2 million in total expenditures. Again, that's all debt service related, so that's going to be your principal and your interest payments. That was relatively flat from prior year. When looking at your debt service fund, you did issue some refunding bonds, so you had a refunding and some remarketing of some existing debt. And what that basically is, is a refinancing, so you can get a better interest rate. So, essentially, that refunding saved the district about $9.5 million in future debt service payments over the life of that debt. Looking at the capital project fund, you had about $117,000 of income. That's related to interest earnings, which, as we all know, interest earnings on those investment pools, they aren't great, but that's kind of what you're left with using public funds. You have to be very risk averse. So, the capital project fund had $62 million in capital expenditures. Again, all of that going mainly towards the high school additions and the middle school addition. The capital project fund also did issue some capital debt, or some capital bond debt of about $50 million bucks. So, again, a lot of that sitting up in cash and cash equivalents that we discussed, so just sitting there until it's spent next year on these projects. So, that really kind of takes care of the financial information I wanted to communicate. Again, a big thanks to Amanda and Brandy for all that they do, getting us all the information. I mean, it was an interesting year, especially with all the COVID money, all the single audit testing that we had to do. They did a great job giving us all the information. It takes a lot of work to get through an audit, and you know, as you can see in this 100-page document, that, you know, it takes a lot of hours, so thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate it, and I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Is there a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Annual Financial Report? Motion has been moved to second, there being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. opposed, motion is approved. Item four on the agenda is review the plan of finance and consider adopting or authorizing the issuance of school building bonds subject to savings goals and delegating the authority to the administration to execute final documents presented by Mr. Doug Witt.
Okay, good evenings. Good to be back. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm not sure if Dr. Powers wants this on the screen or not, but you do have a copy in front there at the table. So, we're here tonight to give you an update on your bond program and seek authorization to proceed. Of course, the first page is the same one we always start with. It's this graph here called the Bond Buyers Index of Municipal Bonds. It's a national index of interest rates and shows kind of where they've been. The historical high occurred in October of 2008, the historical low occurred in August of 2020, and at the bottom right of that graph, you can see that we have been at low interest rates since 2020. There have been some market corrections, if you will, here in January. There is Federal Reserve will be speaking Wednesday. There is expectations that the interest rates need to go up, generally speaking, but we have enjoyed very low interest rates post-COVID and post-pandemic. The average runs across the middle at 4.08%, so again, when we're in a 2% market, we are way down. If we're in a 4% market, we're in an average market, and if we're in a 6% market, it's a very high market. So, with that, I'll go to the next one. You just heard your latest audit report. Those types of financials go to credit rating agencies that put a value on your credit quality here in the school district, and your most recent bond ratings, of course, are AAA based upon the permanent school fund guarantee, and then your standalone credit quality within this district is in the AA category, which is a significant category for us when we go to market Texas school bonds, and both rating agencies have you in the AA category. And what the analysts cite there is at the bottom of the page, strong enrollment growth and economic indicators, solid financial performance, which is exactly what your auditor just explained through the audit, elevated leverage, of course, in Texas, when we grow, we have to issue bonds to deal with that growth, and that's what is recognized there. And then, of course, significant capital needs to meet enrollment growth. That's computer capital needs, that's things like that, opening schools, et cetera. So, you are a reflected, growing district with a very high credit quality, and your financial performance has been outstanding through this growth period. On the next page, page four, again, we always do preliminary bond program analyses before we go out for a bond election, and we have to make certain assumptions and certain parameters, and we have to make sure that we keep the financial promises that we make to our voters. And so, we start here with the pre-election preliminary bond program analysis. Of course, the vote was for $200 million in 2018. The assumptions in the middle are interesting to look back. We've done it many, many years now. I think I've been working with the district about 25 years. We've had a few look backs. I'm kind of nostalgic here tonight because we're looking back at this model that we put in place in 2018. The assumption on the first one there is an average interest rate of 4.25%. Clearly, my predictive power is not very good. In no way did I ever think there would be an airborne virus coming out of a place in China I've never heard of that will make its way to the Gulf Coast, and the reaction to that will be federal intervention in markets, and we'll have 2% interest rate. So, forgive me for not being that good in my predictive power here, but that was a very conservative interest rate at 4.25%, and obviously, I'll go through it in a moment, but we've been well below that as we've issued these bonds. The taxable value growth at 11% per year is exactly what you've been growing on average, and I'll go through that momentarily. The average daily attendance, coming off of demographic reports and so forth, was predicted to be 5.5%. The good news here is that the average daily attendance is no longer a factor in our bond model. We have grown out of state aid, which means that we have to focus on our interest rates and our tax base. Those are the two biggest inputs into our model. So, we're way under budget in our interest rate. Our average daily attendance would otherwise be an offset to that, but it's not because your taxable value grew exactly as we anticipated there. Maintaining the 50 cents, we've always done that with our elections here, and again, we'll continue that trend of maintaining the 50 cents, just as discussed with the voters. At the bottom there, the good news in the report tonight is we were looking for seven years of growth of taxable value under those assumptions to absorb the 200 million. Well, we're about two years ahead of schedule, and we're ahead of schedule, not because I'm a great financial advisor, but because we've been borrowing at much, much lower interest rates than you would have to assume at the time that we were doing the election in 2018. So, we are ahead of schedule. That is good news. We're four years into it. We have one more year to go. We're seeking authorization to finish out the last installment today. It will be against some of your growth that we're anticipating next year, and then you can go into your next plans. And then you can go into your next plans. As best I can tell, growth has not stopped. There are additional facility needs that are coming your way. And the time to begin planning on that is actually again, ahead of schedule, which is a good place to be. And those, those studies and analyses and thoughts need to begin and can begin sooner than you would have expected. And we'll follow this 30 million that we have authorized, but an issue that we'll be issuing here in the spring of 2022. All right. So the next page is the historical statistics that actually did occur. Again, in 2011, 12, your taxable value was 2.2 billion. In 21, 22, it's closer to 6 billion. Your five-year average annual taxable value growth again, hit that 11% mark. You did have the highest growth year at 14% and the lowest growth percentage was 6%. But again, the lower growth percentage is back in the earlier time period of the model. Average daily attendance, you know what that is doing. You know what your enrollment's doing. Average daily attendance is a challenge throughout the state of Texas, but again, no longer a major factor in our bond modeling, as I mentioned before, because your taxable value divided by the number of students that you have has reached the threshold where the state believes it's sufficient to cover your voted bond debt service model that your auditor just touched on with respect to that fund. And that's reflected on the next page. Just moving along pretty quickly, if you look at column six, you grew from $20 of tax base per student or wealth per ADA, as we call it, to 39.83. And $39 is about the level that they're funding now. So basically you have some settle up from prior years in your INS or interest and sinking fund debt service side with the instructional facility allotment, the existing debt allotment. But budgeting going forward, we do not anticipate that even being a part of the model as you go into planning for the next facility needs. On the next page, your tax rate and fund balance history. Again, you have compressed your maintenance and operating tax rate in column two in accordance with state law. So you've come down to below a dollar at 96 cents with the high being in prior years at a dollar 17. The column three INS tax rate has been at 50 cents since 2010, 11, and it's been what our limitation is, if you will, when we look at bond capacity and the speed with which you can address your facility needs. And that is a number that we intend to hit and have hit for many years now. Column five is your interest and sinking fund balance. I heard the number roughly 7 million. That's consistent with the red number at 6.9 million estimate. That's up from 4.7 million the year before. And that will be a factor in our plan of finance that I'll discuss momentarily. We're now in a position to use some of that to pay bonds off early that were issued many, many years ago. And so because our, our bond model is outperforming those assumptions, we now have some money that can pay down on bonds that this district issued many, many years ago, putting us again in position to address the next generation of facility needs. Next page are the optional redemption dates, the early prepayment dates for existing bonds. The two in red there, 2010 A refunding bond and 2011 refunding bond are 2 million and 6 million, relatively small by the size of the district today. At one time we were someone that was issuing, you know, those size of bonds and so forth. But those are prepayable anytime now and the call date is any date. They're outstanding at three and a half to 4%. And so the plan of finance tonight will be to pay off the 2010 A early with some of that excess INS fund balance and some of this year's collections. In the fall of 2022, we will probably come back to you to refund a portion of the 2011 bond in the spring of 2023. So that'll be an ongoing prepayment of existing bonds. I could refund these bonds, but they're small. They don't move the needle on your account and it's better housekeeping, if you will, to pay those off earlier and have the new bonds structured after that. So that's the game plan. It's more cost effective to you and so forth. You do have an August of 2023, 24.7 million. Again, under federal tax law today, we cannot refinance that on a tax exempt basis until 2023. So again, this will be debt management techniques that you will continue to have in this district every six to 12 months going forward. And so that's your next sizable refunding. And then you have a couple of bonds at 35 million and 80 million that are callable in February of 2025. So right now we're not looking at refunding bonds. We are looking at early redemption of the two series of bonds, starting with the first smaller piece and then moving on to the next one as your tax base and account allow. On page nine, which is the primary purpose that we're here tonight is that is that back in 2018, the voters approved $200 million of bonds for construction of facilities here in the district. You issued 60 million at a point 4%. That was that soft put variable rate bond, as we call it. So it's a real low borrowing cost, obviously much lower than the four and the quarter budget. So 4.25% was our budgeted interest rate. In 2019, we issued an additional 60 million at 3.38%. In 2021, the 50 million was at 2.17%. And today's market for our Texas school bonds is roughly two and three quarters percent. And that's the placeholder you see there for the remaining balance of 30 million that we're looking to issue here in the short term. So because all those interest rates are way below four and a quarter, because we've grown out of state aid, again, we're basically two years ahead of schedule of what could have been planned when we started planning back in 2016 and 2017, going into that 2018 bond election. On page 10, to summarize this, the plan of finance is an upcoming early redemption of the 2010 A bonds, paying off $2 million early in March of 22. Then in the middle there, the sale and issuance of the remaining 30 million to put that money into your construction fund for the continued construction of the projects that you discussed back during the election. And then the future early redemption, we're not necessarily acting on that tonight, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this is not a, a one-time early prepayment. It's going to be a multiple time. So I think we're going to have another opportunity to prepay on some or all of that 6 million before you have to issue the new bonds of whatever planning may come over the next year or so. So when that time comes, we'll come back to you and we'll have a report similar to tonight. And then lastly, on the next page is overview of timing. Again, we're here in January for a board approval to move forward. This should conclude with money in the construction fund at the end of March and early redemption of that $2 million at the same timeframe. And so if you would like to make the motion, they are on the next slide at the, pretty much straight off the agenda, but on page 12 are two motions tonight. One is for the issuance of the 30 million of bonds. And then the second one is for the early redemption of that $2 million that I mentioned. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions that you may have. And if not, then there's two motions there.
Is there, is there a motion to adopt the order authorizing the issuance of school building bonds subject to saving goals and delegating the authority to the administration to execute the final document? Motion has been moved to second. There will be no further discussion. Vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Motion is approved. Item five on the agenda to adopt a resolution authorizing early redemption of certain outstanding bond maturities and other matters in connection therewith, presented by Mr. Doug Witt. Item six on the agenda, oh, are there any further discussion? Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing early redemption of certain outstanding bond maturities and other matters in connection therewith within? Motion is moved to second. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item six on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for New Caney High School History Fair presented by Mr. Eric Holt.
Good evening. I am requesting tonight permission for one of our students and teachers to take an out-of-state trip to Oahu, Hawaii.
Where are we to?
I know.
You need to.
Yes. This trip is in partnership with National History Day Sacrifice for Freedom Program, which is highly selective programs granted by National History Day to a team of one teacher and one student. They were both one of 16 people in the U.S. that got chosen for this. During the institute, both the student, Carter Holton, and the teacher, Megan Scheck, will be studying at Pearl Harbor. The requested dates for travel are July 24th through July 30th of this summer. This trip encourages a student and teacher to broaden their historical perspectives and provide an invaluable experience honoring those who were lost during the events of World War II. We're asking for your permission for them to attend this trip. It's all expense paid. The program pays for airfare, meals, living board. Pretty cool. So. Ma'am? Right, right. Any questions about the trip? Sure. I'll have him present the, I asked him if I could go be a chaperone for this and he said, no way. So he didn't, doesn't want me anywhere near Hawaii. So, but yes, we can do that if you'd like. Certainly have him come back and present on what they, what they learned for sure.
Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for New Caney High School History Fair? Motion moved to second. There being no further discussion. All those in favor? Motion is approved. Item seven on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those, if nobody signed up. Item eight on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072 for land development and real estate issues, and Government Code 551.082 for student discipline. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes and open meeting. The time is 6:42. The board will now, sorry. The board ended its closed meeting at 8:14. Well, now it could be an open session. Item nine on the agenda is superintendent report. Item 10 on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members. Thank you very much. Item 11 on the agenda is consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of finance reports, consideration of purchasing reports, and consideration of personnel reports. Are there any further questions? Is there a motion to approve these items on the consent calendar? Motion is moved to second. All those in favor? Motion is approved. At this time, Matt?
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's an honor to not to get to introduce to y'all the first head coach slash athletic director at West Fork High School. Coach Holly, Ms. Hahn, and myself couldn't be more proud of the man that is being chosen to lead the athletic programs over there and the football team and, and to grow West Fork and what it could be. So it's very exciting times over there. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce everybody to Coach Dougal. Somewhat of a familiar face. He's at Porter High School right now. So again, it's always a, it's a great thing we, we can borrow on and promote from within. So exciting times at West Fork and Ms. Hahn, he got one down. So a few more to go between now and August, but Coach, looking forward to great things at West Fork.
Just now get, get rid of all that red and go all green.
Okay. Item 12 on the agenda is consider, discuss, and potentially take action to rescind proposal termination of a teacher-coach at Woodridge Forest Middle School and delegate all authority to the administration to take all administrative actions as necessary presented by Ms. Land.
Yes, sir. A little impromptu. I was, was not aware I was going to be speaking. So as, as you just stated, I would like to propose a recommendation for you guys to consider, discuss, and potentially take action to rescind the proposed termination of a teacher-coach at Woodridge Forest Middle School and delegate all authority to the administration to take all administrative action as necessary.
I move that we rescind our previous action as described in the posted item and delegate authority to the administration to carry out all administrative action.
Motion is moved to second. There being no further discussion. All those in favor? Motion is approved. Item 13 on the agenda is consider, discuss, potentially take action on administration's proposal to non-renew a teacher-coach at Woodridge. Did I read that already?
No, you're, keep reading.
Woodridge Forest Middle School and delegate authority to administration to take all administrative actions necessary by Ms. Land.
Yes. As you just stated, I am recommending that you guys consider, discuss, and potentially take action as proposed on the administration's proposal to non-renew a teacher-coach at Woodridge Forest Middle School and delegate authority to administration to take all administrative actions necessary.
I move that we propose the non-renewal of a teacher at Woodridge Forest Middle School and delegate authority to administration to take all necessary actions.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Take a vote. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:20.